As well, and a lot of time and energy has gone into them. And so I want to share a little bit about the purpose of what you received today and the experience tomorrow. So the videos from the school are first of all to welcome you back and to hear from your administrators, and then get to see all the things that have been happening at the school level. Of course, things like procedures are also being shared. I'm going to hold on because the phones ring. Galloway Schools.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I have a question. My children's phone.
Okay, ma'am, if I could ask you to hold on, it's not time for questions yet.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. So if you just tuned in, even though the phone number is on the screen, I asked you to wait. I'm going to share a little more information, and then I will take questions. Thank you for your patience. So those school videos will also give you information about arrival and dismissal and different procedures like that that are important every year, but particularly important this year. Tomorrow, whether it's live Zoom with the teacher or a video the teacher has created, the purpose with that is to... Sorry. Hi, Galloway Schools.
Hi, I was trying to find out where the town hall is being held.
Okay, it's from a YouTube link on the district website. It's also posted on Facebook.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Giacchino, I would recommend the Facebook link as that's a lot easier to access. That one I'm looking up right now.
Mr. Post, thank you, and I will repeat that. We just had a call, how do I access this video? So it is being livestreamed from YouTube, and the link is on our Facebook page, the Galloway Schools Facebook page, and you can get to that through our website. Thank you, Mr. Post. So tomorrow, with the connections with the teacher, again, whether it's live or whether it's recorded, it has several purposes. One of the things is to re-acclimate or get our students excited and give them a preview of what school will be this year. Now, obviously, if your child's coming to school for the first time, especially preschool and K, again, that will be live. But for all the grades, we know that this year, school will have some things that are the same and some things that will be very different. And so tomorrow is a chance to make a personal connection and learn a little bit about the teachers, see their faces, get a little information from them, as well as the goal is to preview Monday. And as a reminder, Mondays are virtual days for everyone, whether you're totally virtual or a hybrid model. So Monday, September 14th, the first day of the 2020-21 school year is an all-virtual day. You will need, or the children will need, with your help, mamas and dads and guardians, to log into OnCourse. So I'm going to be repetitive for a minute. Parents, you need to re-register and log on so the student login information we sent you will work. So parents, guardians first, students second. So again, tomorrow, the teachers will be emailing you links either to a live Zoom or to a recorded message. Meet and greet, see their faces, learn some things, preview what that virtual Monday will be all about. On Monday, you will have to log in to the OnCourse classroom. And I want to talk a moment about that. I have had people say, "Annette, are you out of your mind that we're implementing a brand-new student information system in the middle of a pandemic?" Well, some of you, no matter how I'm answering, may say, "Yes, she is." But this was a decision we made prior to the pandemic, and we felt we should follow through. We knew there would be bumps. We knew it would take time. We have administrators and secretaries and other staff working almost around the clock with the company to get it all going. And the reason I believe it will be worth it in the end is because it really puts everything into one package. For the teachers, their gradebook, taking attendance, their OnCourse classroom. They're able to message parents, email parents, post announcements, all from OnCourse. For you on that family end, it's one of my favorite things, shopping. It's one-stop shopping for you because you too will be able to access the parent portal, replacing what we used to have, as well as your children and the OnCourse classroom. The system is amazingly powerful. Mrs. Napoli, who is one of our directors of curriculum, has been tirelessly leading us through the implementation. And I joined teachers in Zoom webinars that Mrs. Napoli and Ms. Suzette Lopez from OnCourse have been doing for our staff this week. And certainly, all our technology teachers and other teachers who were the initial people trained have been helping. So again, I know there's been some bumps. I owe a few of you answers to emails tonight, in fact. But we are committed to supporting the teachers in implementing OnCourse, as well as helping families, parents, and students alike. One of the things I did share with teachers today was when they are connecting with families, whether again, pre-recorded or live, tomorrow, please be honest about that. There's nothing wrong with, especially with the children. Hey, I'm learning this for the first time too. So we're going to learn together. We're learning about our virtual classroom together. We're learning what hybrid in-person instruction looks like together. The last thing I'm going to talk about before I do open it up to phone calls is our teachers have been given a detailed virtual learning manual. And this was one of the webinars and training this week that they received. And there are very clear expectations. So I do want to remind you, we are not livestreaming all day. But for the virtual students, the all-virtual students, there will be numerous live Zooms during the day. And then there will be times that students will work on their own or will work in OnCourse classroom. It's based on the "watch, do, meet" concept. Teachers will be explaining more about this. For the hybrid students, virtual Mondays will be similar to the other virtual students in terms of there will be live Zoom sessions, times their work on their own, as well as work in the OnCourse classroom. Then we know that the hybrid students are in either A group or B group. If they are in A group, they come to school on Tuesday and Wednesday. If they are in the B group, they come to school on Thursday and Friday. And I really do ask that parents pay attention to that. An administrator said to me yesterday, "What are we going to do if a B student shows up on Tuesday?" Well, of course, we're going to let the child into school, but then we're going to call the parents to please come get the child. Because please remember, our entire model is designed around the restart guidance and the guidance we've been given from the Department of Health and the CDC about maintaining social distance and mask wearing and all those things to keep everyone healthy and safe. I do want to also mention that on the days that the hybrid students are at home, they will have things to do in Google Classroom. And then the last hour of the day will be a live opportunity. Now, at elementary school, where the teachers have the same... Excuse me, the students have the same teacher for almost every subject, they'll be able to do that daily. But if you think of that hour at 6th through 8th grade where the students see different teachers for language arts, math, science, and social studies, there will be a schedule. And speaking of schedules, I want to mention that when you look at the schedule in OnCourse, you are probably saying, "I don't understand this." Because it is designed to make OnCourse work and connect children to teachers, to gradebook, to attendance. Teachers will be providing you with much clearer schedules about what time to log in, and you will do your students' attendance on virtual days through OnCourse, as well as what subjects will happen at what time. And again, that overall schedule for each day and for the week. When you logged into OnCourse, and this is also on our website, there is a specialized handbook. It has information about what virtual learning should look like, as well as information of the hybrid model. We have a much bigger parent-family handbook. I haven't sent that to you yet because I really want, right now, everyone to focus on the OnCourse, the virtual learning, and the health and safety protocols. So, all right, it's been almost 20 minutes that I've talked. Now it's time to hear from all of you. So, Mr. Post, if you will put the phone call back up. And folks, just to let you know how this will work, as it says on the screen, this is one extension, and I'm answering the calls live. So if it's busy, you need to hang up and try again. When someone calls, I will ask that you speak loudly and clearly. You may or may not know this, I wear hearing aids. And even though the phone's right there and my hearing aids are in, I want to make sure I can hear you. And then I will repeat the question before answering it to make sure you all can hear the question. So here's the number on the screen. I'm here to answer your phone calls, your questions, your comments. Hi, you're live on the town hall. How may I help you?
Hi, I have a question. My daughter's getting re-trode, and I know I've been following along. We are hybrid model Group A, and that childcare is available before and after school on those days. We're so curious, from a parent perspective, if I can pay a separate cost for before and after care, why couldn't the students come to school all day?
Okay, so if you are wondering, I'm going to answer two parts. The question is, if there's before and after care, why can't students come to school all day? So there's a couple reasons for that. And I'm going to combine a question I've had in the past. Why can't students come to school every day? So this is really... One of the main reasons is health and safety. We needed to divide the students into the two groups so that we could properly social distance the students because we are under that six-feet-apart guideline as per the state to the greatest extent possible. So then the question becomes, why is it not a full day? Well, because the students are not here every day, we wanted to make sure that on the days they're not here, there is an opportunity for them to connect live with teachers. And while you may say, "Okay, well, livestream all day." And while there may be some districts out there that are doing that, it is our belief that the days the children are actually here, we want the teachers' full attention on the children sitting in front of them and not also worrying about children at home watching the livestream. I don't think that really gives the focus for really either group of children. So in order for the teacher then to connect with the students that aren't there in person, we need to end the school day, send the children home, give the teacher a chance to have lunch and prep, and then at 2:30, connect live with the children who were not in person that day. And I will tell you, if we could have every child here every day or for longer periods right now, we absolutely would do it. But especially to start the year and to meet all the guidelines that were given to us by the state and to try to make it fair for the children that are here two days and not here the other days, we really saw this as the best way to accomplish that. So I hope that answers the question. Thank you so much for calling.
I had one more.
Sure.
The colorful school year calendar that came out, it color-coded all the way through the school year. Is this plan going to be reevaluated after the first marking period, as that was mentioned earlier in the summer?
So the question was, we sent home that color-coded calendar for the whole year. Will things be evaluated as the year progresses? And absolutely. And part of that is based on guidance from the state. And you know, the southern part where we are is green or yellow, if you understand or have seen the different color coatings that the state uses with the risk level. So that's a really good thing with us opening school. So part of us making the decision to change is based on how the state moves through its reopening plan and the guidance we are given. For example, keeping the children six feet apart. Can that change? Or can we manage to have more children in person? The other piece is looking at our own class size based on the state guidance. But we absolutely will continue to reevaluate. And if we can bring the children who want to come in person more days, we certainly will. You know, there's a lot of different opinions about where the state is and where the country is. And we are following the guidance here in New Jersey and working with what we have available. But the bottom-line answer is, we absolutely will continue to evaluate. We felt, in the event we are not able to expand, it was important for parents to have the calendar for the whole year. I hope that helps.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thanks for calling, and have a great night. Let's see if we have other questions. Here we go. Hi, you're on the town hall.
Hi, I was just wondering if there was an OnCourse app for parents, not for the students necessarily, but if there was an app we should be looking for or if it's specifically desktop-based?
The question is, is there an OnCourse app? And there is not an app. And we've had a lot of questions and are talking with the company about it. Apparently, other districts are doing that as well. I have myself accessed OnCourse using like a web browser on my phone. Obviously, that's a very small screen, but it does work that way. So if the company adds that, we certainly will get it out to you ASAP.
Oh, thank you so much.
Have a great night. Thank you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Good evening. You're live on the town hall.
Hi, I was just curious as to if you guys had a different setup for the breakfast and lunch pickup due to the kids being on virtual Mondays?
So the question is, is there a different breakfast and lunch pickup because of the virtual Monday? And actually, meal distribution still will be on Monday. That was one of the two reasons we made Monday virtual because our food services staff have to prep the breakfast and lunch for distribution for the all-virtual kids, which is about a third of our students, as well as on the days children are in person, prep the meals for the in-person children, and for the days that the hybrid students aren't in person to be able to have their families pick up meals as well. So we will be doing those reminders about meal pickup. It will happen at every school except Pomona, I believe. Oh, and I don't want to get this wrong. I think Pomona is picking up at Roland Rogers. And I believe GSA is picking up at Smithville. I also want to use this as an opportunity to say to everyone that last year, we were able to implement universal breakfast, which means breakfast at no cost to families, no matter what your economic status. That universal breakfast continues this year. In the spring, when we were closed for the pandemic, the government gave us the ability to do universal lunch as well. What we learned last week, or maybe it was two weeks ago, we now can offer universal lunch as well through December 31st. So that means any child can get breakfast and lunch every day, regardless of economic status. So thank you for calling and asking about that. Mrs. Westcott just texted me. We have about 77 people watching right now. Our last town hall, I think, was about 300. But you wanted to learn about the restart plan then and hear all the health and safety protocols. I know we've sent you a lot of information. I hope we're not overwhelming you. It probably feels that way. But our position is, we would rather over-communicate and, you know, try to highlight the most important things and give you the choice of when you want to read something or when you want to watch something. Ah, here's a caller. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, Dr. Giacchino. I had a question for you regarding children that have IEPs with the virtual and the in-person learning, I guess. To my understanding, the kids, when they are home, when they're hybrid learning, and they're not in school and they're home, they are doing self-instruction. Am I correct on that?
I'm going to repeat your question and then answer. So the question was, when students are home, you know, they're in the hybrid model, particularly if they're special ed, are they doing self-instruction? And my answer is, it is not self-instruction. And depending upon the child's IEP and what type of services the child receives. For example, we have some children that are in a self-contained special ed program, spend, you know, language arts, math, science, and social studies with the same teacher. We have some children who are in a regular ed homeroom, and they are pulled out. They have pull-out resource for language arts and math. And then we have children who are an in-class resource. There's two teachers in the room. Depending on which model, that will govern how much live instruction they get on the days that they are at home, be it the full virtual model, if you selected that, or the hybrid model. We are responsible for meeting the child's IEP. And Dr. Baldwin, our director of Student Services for Special Education, has been working with the Child Study Team members and the special ed teachers during the summer and all this week to really help ensure that everyone understands what the IEP requires and how that instruction will be delivered. I hope that helps.
It does. What happens if your child has an IEP, but they're no longer in a two-teacher-inclusion classroom? How much hands-on are they going to get when they're not in school?
Sure, that is still governed by their IEP. So for example, we have children that only have an IEP and only have related services, maybe speech. That speech service will still be provided, or OT, or PT. If a student has, for example, pull-out resource, they will be going to pull-out resource. The schedule is done to keep those children in the cohort together. So they're in their main homeroom, and they're pulled out together. Before another group of students come into that same classroom, the room is sanitized. And so again, that is IEP-driven. And there are the kinds of things, while not tomorrow, but next week, that teachers will be going over the schedules, both for the whole class and then if they need to set up emails or get more specific with an individual parent.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks for calling.
Thank you.
Take care. While we're waiting, I thought of something I did not mention. And I'm surprised this isn't already a phone call. Let's say, when the teacher does the live Zoom tomorrow at 2 o'clock, and this is particularly for... Hold that thought, Annette. Let me answer the call. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, I was wondering, my daughter will be taking the bus, and she is the first time she's taken a teakay. And I was wondering, is there to be someone to pick her up or like take her to the class?
Sure. The question is, this parent has a preschooler taking the bus for the first time. Will someone pick her up and take her to the class? So for preschool and kindergarten in particular, there absolutely is a protocol. Preschoolers come in later than the other elementary children. So they are on separate buses, and there is an aide on the bus. So the preschool teachers and classroom assistants will meet the children and bring them into the school. Each of the schools also has protocols for kindergarten children in particular. And there are also assistants in kindergarten classrooms. One of the things, and I realize they were just posted today, but this is one of the things in the orientation presentations that all of the schools put out today. They are all posted on our Facebook page. Arrival and dismissal are reviewed on these videos. So if you haven't had a chance to watch them, I encourage you to take the time to do so before Monday. I think there's a lot of really good information. And so again, I will repeat. Particularly for preschool and kindergarten, someone will help the children get to their classes. And that's really true for all the kids because you may not have known where the 3rd grade class was last year when you were a 2nd grader and maybe you had an older sibling. But that room might not be in the same exact location this year. So we are blessed to have a very dedicated staff that especially this year, on those first in-person days, they will be providing lots of assistance and guidance to the children. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're more than welcome. Thanks for joining us. So I was saying before, if you can't do the live Zoom for preschool or K tomorrow, there will be something recorded as well for you to view at another time. And here's a caller. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, I had a question about the middle school schedule.
Sure.
My daughter is going to be in advanced, I guess, Spanish 1 and 8 grades. And when... And when we're looking at her schedule, it says that it's almost like she has like an extra period, like a seventh period for Spanish, but then she still has her left. I don't know if you could talk about that, because I know that was a question a lot of parents were asked about.
Absolutely. So the question is, a middle school student who has the advanced Spanish program, how does that work in the schedule? The way we are doing that right now is all of that Spanish 1 will be done virtually. And so when the teachers go over the schedule, there will be an OnCourse classroom and Zoom link for that particular Spanish 1 course. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. Well, if they're in school, I'd say on the high, and then as virtual, is there going to be like time for them to come on the bus before that starts?
Absolutely. That's a great question, and that is all planned out so that the middle school students dismiss at 2:15. Teachers will get any prep minutes they haven't had while the kids were there. They'll get their lunch. And then they will be going on live different classes based on a student's schedule. And although you can see a schedule in OnCourse, we know from the parent perspective, it's not perfectly clear. And that's why teachers will be sharing and reviewing schedules.
Okay.
Thanks for calling.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I will share, and I've talked to a couple of parents about this. We are running four schools. And you may be looking, what? There are six schools, and that's true. But within each school, there are, oh, I'll hold that thought. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, good evening. I have a question regarding if the students return back to school, and they, when they leave the house, they don't have a symptom of COVID? And when they get to the school during the day, they start not feeling good? And what is the protocol of the school? If they sense that they have a fever and stuff like that, are they going to get sent home? Or are they gonna, there's other protocols that the school has?
Sure, and I'll repeat the question. The question is about the protocol if a child becomes ill during the school day. So first, I'm going to do the reminder that one of the things you need to read and electronically check off in OnCourse is that you are certifying, guaranteeing that you will do a health screening of your child every morning before sending your child to school. And there is a form that shows you exactly what symptoms to look for when your child can come to school and when your child should stay home. When your children arrive at school, staff members will be doing a visual screening of your child. If a child presents with symptoms during the school day, the child will be sent to the nurse. The nurse will check the child. And if the symptoms are ones that the child should not remain in school, the child will be moved to an isolation room. So we do have a room in every school set up for children to wait. It is socially distanced. It follows guidelines we were given by the Department of Health. The parent will be contacted and will be asked to pick up the child. And then the nurse will follow up with the family. Obviously, if there are symptoms that are related to COVID-19, you need to call your child's pediatrician, have the child checked. And again, any child that presents with symptoms goes to the nurse. The nurse checks isolation room if needed, and then sent home. And then the nurse will be following up regarding when the child can return to school. Obviously, we have very detailed protocols related to cleaning if a child has had symptoms, related to, and I should say, cleaning and disinfecting, as well as very detailed protocols if a child or adult tests positive. Does that help?
Yes. So just to make clear that they're not, they are going to be sent home. They're not going to be forced to go to the hospital.
No, it could. Yeah, the question was, will the child,
They have a choice.
Will the child be forced to go to the hospital? The only way we would ever force a child to go to the hospital is if the child was presenting with life-threatening symptoms, and then we would call 911. But if a child does have certain symptoms, the nurse will follow up, and you may be required to, you know, get a doctor's note to have your child return to school.
Yes, I was just worried about that. People are saying that once they have a symptom, they might not go home to the parent.
No, they will go home to their parent. Yes, no, if a child has symptoms, the parent will do the pickup.
And they are not requiring a waiver when the school opens, right?
The question was, they're not requiring a waiver. So can you tell me what you mean by waiver?
Well, I was told that before you go to school, you sign up a waiver saying that anything happened to your child, the school has a power to send them, to bring them to the hospital.
Okay. This is about a waiver that the school has the right to take your child to the hospital because they have COVID symptoms? Absolutely not. What we are asking you to sign is that you will screen your child for symptoms every day. And if they have symptoms and there's their specific details, you will keep your child home and not send your child to school sick. If a child presents with symptoms, they will be put in the isolation room, and the parent will be called to pick up the child.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for calling. Have a good night. So the four schools. We have six schools in the district, but within each school, there are the, oh, they don't want me to get this out, but I'd rather answer the question. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. So like, I'm sorry if you didn't answer this already. So I'm calling to ask you. I don't know where you are here. Okay, still there?
Okay, what's the question?
I'm sorry. The question is, where, when I got my child's calendar for the day, it started at 8:35 and ends at 3:30. Are they expected to go to school every day that long?
Okay, the question is that the schedule or calendar shows 8:35 to 3:30. So that is the actual school day. So for a child who is in person at the elementary level, it's 8:35 and dismissal is at 1:30. But after the children go home, the school day is not done. Again, at the elementary level, they should go home, take some time to have their recess, but then they will have work to do. It might be a reading assignment. It might be a written assignment. It might be a video to watch and other things like that. So they are getting a full school day. But at this point in time, no child is in school all day, every day. Does that help?
Yes, it does. So they'll be like working on their specials and stuff, and they're not, no longer optional, correct? They have to be.
Yes. The question was, are specials optional? So last spring, we did not take traditional attendance. We did not give grades. This year, because we've had time to plan and we have time to educate you, attendance will be taken every day. In the virtual classroom, when you log into OnCourse, the first thing that happens each day virtually is a pop-up where you are marking yourself present or absent. On the in-person days, obviously, we're taking attendance in person. And attendance will be monitored. The phone calls, if you haven't been marked present, all of that will still occur. We realize that parents have different schedules, and so if you don't get to do that till later, we will work with you. But there does need to be, on the days that are virtual, that check in through OnCourse because we want your child participating. In terms of grading, as I've announced, we did revise our grading system. Preschool will remain as it is because they didn't get grades. They get progress reports. In kindergarten through 5th grade, it is standards-based grading based on students' academic progress in each of the content areas, and there was very specific standards. And then in the other grades, there are grades, traditional grades, but they are based solely on the academic performance. Other kinds of things that people call social skills or soft skills are rated separately. There is information about attendance and grading in that specialty parent handbook that I mentioned that can be accessed in OnCourse and will also be on our district website. Does that help?
Yes, it does. So is 5th grade considered middle school?
Although our 6th grade is in the elementary building, 6th grade is treated more like the middle school because they change classes. Their teachers have to be content experts like the middle school, and they will receive grades like the middle school. And that is explained in the handbook. And certainly, when we're ready for the first report card, we will send information as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, hi, Dr. G. This is Danielle Caruth calling. How are you?
It's great to talk to you. How are you?
I'm doing great. I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I wanted to ask a question about the virtual learner. I wanted to know if the teachers that they have assigned are solely for them? Or do the teachers share duties for the hybrid students?
The question is, do the virtual teachers only have the virtual students? Or are they also hybrid? Overwhelmingly, the virtual teachers are only the virtual teachers and working with the virtual students. Now, obviously, for art or music or things like that, teachers are doing both hybrid in-person and virtual. But overwhelmingly, for language arts, math, science, and social studies, they are dedicated. There are some exceptions, but they are in cases where the number of students is manageable, and they can handle that.
Okay, that's great. And my second question was, will there be opportunities this year for band and/or chorus? For all students, only for hybrid students, or no students?
So the question was about band and chorus. So in terms of instrumental music, that will be happening, and it will actually be virtual for all the students. So even the kids that are in person will have their instrumental music lessoned and banned virtually. That worked out the best way in the schedule. In terms of chorus at the elementary level, we have not finalized that yet, so information will be coming. For those of you with children at the middle school level, although we have not put out this information yet, we will be doing some virtual clubs and activities. We wanted to get the regular school year started before we got that going.
Okay, well, the students who have had instrumental in the past, like instrumental lessons, when do we look forward to getting that information? Once the school year is underway, or did I miss something?
The question was about the instrumental music information. That has not been sent yet. That will happen once the school year gets underway.
That sounds wonderful. Thanks a lot, Dr. G. You're all doing a great job.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate your call. Be well.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Dr. Giaquinto, just an FYI. I'm monitoring the YouTube stream for the delay, so I'm sure there will be phone calls coming in once the YouTube stream catches up.
Thank you, Mr. Post, and here is one now. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, good evening. So I just had a quick question. Currently, my kids are signed up to go to the hybrid portion, and they're scheduled to go to school Thursday and Friday. So my question is, let's just say, you know, they come home Friday and they just don't like it or they don't think they can do it. Will I be able to then transfer them to all virtual?
So the question is, the children are scheduled for hybrid. And suppose after trying it, they don't like it. Can I switch? So what will happen is, there's a form that if a parent wants a change of model at this point, you need to fill out a form. And the reason I say this, going from in-person to virtual is certainly something that is easier than going from virtual to in-person. I'm not sure, I'm going to say that again. Hybrid in-person to virtual is easier than virtual to in-person. However, one of the things, and this is where I was talking about the four schools, so I'm going to weave this in now. We are really running four schools. We have at each of our six schools, the children that are all virtual. Then we have the hybrid children that are in the A group in their schedule. The hybrid children that are in the B group in their schedule, as well as our self-contained special ed children are coming in four days a week and one day virtual. So that's a fourth schedule. So both parents and, you know, even some teachers asked, why did it take so long to get assignments out? Well, we had to take all our existing staff members and analyze all these numbers to make the assignments of what people were actually teaching, who was teaching in person, who was teaching in virtually. Some people had to change assignments. So now that we are, let's face it, one day tomorrow is the last day for staff only from school starting. If a request comes in, we have to look at the class size, even in the virtual world, to try to make sure we can manage the switch. So if something isn't going well, you need to contact me. There's a form you will fill out, and then we will make a decision. And that is going from hybrid to virtual. If you selected virtual and you want to go hybrid, as per board policy, that will not happen until second marking period unless it really is a hardship. Again, we have the form. You contact me, or you, excuse me, call my secretary. She's extension 1016. Her name is Heather Harris. She's my administrative assistant, and we will address those situations individually. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, you're live on the town hall.
Hi, good evening. I have a preschool student that's going to be going to Garden State, and I was just wondering, when they are going to be doing the live streaming, do you know about how long that's going to be for the preschool toolkit?
Okay, the question is about Garden State Academy, and everyone may not be aware that we get funding for preschool and all of the children we could not accommodate here in Galloway. So some we fund to go to Garden State Academy. There's a lottery. So the question was, how long will children be live, you know, via Zoom or whatever tool they're using during a school day? I don't know the exact answer. What I can tell you, however, is very clear guidance from the New Jersey Department of Ed Early Childhood Division, as well as organizations like the American Academy of Pediatrics, do recommend limiting live streaming and computer time, especially for young children. So even if you're a Galloway preschool kid coming to, you know, Pomona or Rollin' or Smithville, you will get that schedule. And, you know, again, based on those recommendations for those youngest learners, that's how that decision will be made. So Garden State should also be pushing out information to you. If you have not gotten that, you can either call the school, or Mrs. Burgess, she got married, she used to be Ms. LaPresto, she is our director who helps oversee preschool and connects with Garden State.
Okay.
Thanks for calling. Good evening, you're live on the town hall.
Hi. Thanks for having us tonight. I have a question about the online for the hybrid students. Are they going to be using Google Classroom and ONCourse, or are we just doing ONCourse this year?
The question is, will students be using Google Classroom and ONCourse? And the answer is, our learning management system will strictly be ONCourse Classroom. Now, there are a lot of different Google things in the Google Drive. For example, Google Doc, Slides, all those different things. So within the ONCourse Classroom, there are other tools, including the Google Suite, if you will, that teachers are able to embed links into the ONCourse Classroom for students to access. But the main classroom is the ONCourse Classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one more quick question. Since everyone's able to receive the free breakfast and free lunch, is there still a process to sign up for that, or how does that work now that it's universal?
Sure. The question is, do you need to sign up for universal breakfast or lunch? And you do not. What will happen is, on Mondays, for the all-virtual students, or for the days when hybrid students aren't in, you can come and pick up the five meals or the three meals. When the children are in school, at the elementary level, for breakfast, it will be delivered to their classroom. For the middle school, there's a process where they will go to carts, socially distancing, of course, and pick it up. Every day in homeroom, the teacher will do a lunch count of what children want the hot lunch, or what children want the cold lunch. The teacher will actually enter that into ONCourse, and that will get sent electronically so food services know how many lunches to prepare, and then lunches will be delivered to the classroom. The only exception for that is, at preschool, parents do send in the student meal choice for lunch, and Pomona School and the other preschools will share information about that. Does that help?
Yes, thank you so much.
Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks. It is a little after seven, and I will say, we will go to 7:30 this evening. We'll go to 7:30. Here's a call. Hi, you're live on the town hall.
Yeah, I heard a question from a group of us parents. With the kids' student accounts on Google, they don't have email. A lot of us work, and you're saying that the parents are going to be receiving the email to these links for Zoom and possible pre-recorded videos and stuff for tomorrow, that we have no idea what time these teachers are reaching out to us about. How at work are we supposed to, you know, get this information to our children that are either in a virtual learning support school, like my son is in, or at a grandparent's house or something like that, if we're at work? Like, are you guys going to give the kids emails that they can then get the information? Like, how do we do this?
Okay, so the question is about tomorrow that we're emailing. And first, let me say, the reason we're emailing is because everyone has not registered in ONCourse, and so we were not comfortable pushing it out through ONCourse tomorrow. Some teachers will also be posting it to the ONCourse. So for pre-K and K, that will be an email with a link to a live Zoom. The teachers will also post something that you can look at later. And that is coming at 2:00. So the time is set. For all of the other grades, the teachers have the choice to do something live, but they have to do something recorded. So you will be getting the email around 2:00. And you could, you know, if the child, you know, if you can get that email to your child, or if you share an email with your child, your child can access it then. But if not, that link will still be available, and you can look at it later. You don't have to do that at 2:00 PM.
Okay. Now, were the Chromebook screens where my son receives physical therapy and occupational therapy, all the links for their Zoom meetings have to be sent to me, because you can't access an email account on the Chromebook from the school? Every time he had meeting last year, we had to manually type in the meeting number and everything, like all the address stuff, instead of being able to just click the link. Is that changed, or do we still have to go through that?
Okay. I will tell you, everything, starting Monday, will get pushed out through the ONCourse Classroom. And so I am not aware that it is any different for related services, but I would ask you the favor, if you could email me that question. I do know that last year, that Child Study Team and I think Related Services were using GoToMeeting. Everyone this year is using Zoom. So I do believe that will work differently this year.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care. Hello, it's the town hall.
Hi, yes, I have a question in reference to the hybrid section. So you have, our kids are going to be there until, you know, for the half a day, and then the teachers are going to be going livestream at 2:30. My question is, a school day normally is over around 3:20, so how long are the teachers actually going to be livestreaming? And the kids that are at home, are they supposed to not have any work until 2:30 when the teacher goes on livestream, or she's only going to be available for questions at that time?
So the question is about when the students go home, what are they doing, the livestream that the teacher's doing later, how does that all work? So at the middle school, which starts earlier, that last hour of the day, I think is 1:15 to 2:15, or 1:30 to 2:30. At the elementary level, it's 2:30 to 3:30. So when the children get home, there's recess, there's independent reading or other work that might be on their Google Classroom that they're doing independently. Then, at 2:30, they will join the Zoom, depending on the schedule. So I want to start and make sure I'm clear about that. On the days that the children are in-person, when they go home, they will be working independently through things on Google Classroom, watching a video, there may be assignments to submit, et cetera. That last hour of the day is mainly for the children that were not in school that day, that 2:30 to 3:30.
And so that's basically just, they'll have work throughout that day at home, but if they have questions, they're supposed to go on at 2:30 and 3:30?
The teacher will clarify that for you. One of the things, and I don't think I said this earlier, on Monday, the teacher is front-loading the week. So no matter whether the kid comes in on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday, they're hearing the key concepts, previewing the week. When the children are in school on Tuesday and Wednesday, obviously, they're getting live instruction from the teacher, and then they'll have things to do at home. The children who were at home on Tuesday and Wednesday will have things to do at home, and then will connect with the teacher that last hour of the day. And then on Thursday and Friday, that will flip-flop.
And then, so basically, on Monday, the teacher is going to, I guess, put out the assignments for the entire week? Like, Monday, you know, will say Tuesday will be this, Wednesday will be that, Friday will be that?
Yes. Part of this statement was, on Mondays, the teachers are putting out the assignments for the week. The teacher may not put out every assignment for the week, but the more important piece of what the teacher is doing on Monday is looking at, what are the key standards, or objectives, or skills that they want the children to learn that week? And so there will be direct instruction by the teacher on Monday, again, to help set that stage for the week. And then, again, depending on when the children are in-person or working from home, they will either be getting more instruction and support from the teacher in-person, or through things the teacher has posted on the ONCourse Classroom.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for asking. Take care.
Dr. Giaquinto, the stream is now caught off to the end of the last caller.
Ah, Mr. Post, thank you so much. So it is, let me see, I think it's around quarter after seven. Yes, I'm going to give it a few minutes to see if anyone else does call. One of the things in answering some of these questions, that we're very academically focused about delivery of instruction and content and grading, the beginning, I will finish that thought. Hi, you're live on the town hall. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. My question is, the special education classes that the teachers, is both the live teacher and the virtual teacher, are those students only going to get instruction, the virtual students, are they only going to get instruction in the afternoon? Or is everything, or will there be any live instruction during the morning time?
The question is about if a special education teacher has some virtual students and some in-person students, will the students only get instruction in the afternoon? And the answer is no. There is a schedule that Dr. Baldwin has worked out with the teachers, and again, we will make sure that we are fulfilling that IEP with the instructional minutes. So more of that detail will be provided by the teachers, maybe a little taste of it tomorrow, but more importantly, Monday and throughout next week.
Okay. And one more question. Are all of this call, I think you know how we answered it, are all of the calls tomorrow recorded, or are there live calls too?
Can you say part of that again, or something about are things recorded?
The calls tomorrow, are they, are going to be live calls for the teachers, or are they all recorded calls? Or is it a bit of a loop?
So the question is about tomorrow, at 2:00, preschool and K will be going, doing live Zooms, but there will also be something that will be available that is recorded. For all the other grades, they are not required to do something live, but they are required to do something recorded. And so those links will be sent out and will be posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If I talk, I bet the phone's going to ring, but I'm going to try. So I was saying that, you know, a lot of good questions about academics and schedules and delivery of instruction, and I love that. But one of the things I do want parents and guardians to know is, the beginning of school year really is about re-acclimating children to school in whatever setting they're in, building school culture and creating a warm classroom environment, whether it's virtual or in-person, getting to know one another, and helping the children understand. and helping the children understand the health and safety protocols in person as well as understanding the virtual aspects of the school year. Here's a phone call. Hi, you're live on the Town Hall.
Yes, I have a question about the Zoom tomorrow. The Zoom is, the link is being sent to the parent email address, correct? So if I have two children, I'll be getting two emails, like separate for each child? So how do I log on, how do I see them both at the same time?
So the question is, if, will a parent get separate emails if they have children, more than one child? And the answer is yes. Now, if you have a preschooler or a kindergartner that aren't in the same class, obviously, you may not, unless there's two adults available, be able to watch both of them at the same time. So you might have to do one live and for the other one, watch recorded. But again, everyone is posting or sending you links to things that are recorded in addition to the live. Does that help?
Okay, yeah, I just, because I have a first grader, fourth grader.
Okay.
I was in for, if there are people that are doing something live, I would let them see them live.
Sure.
I'd rather them know, know what I'm seeing at 2:00 at 3:00. I don't want them seeing it live if I can just see it later, if it's not live.
Sure, and pre-K and K were required to do something live. The other grades, it is optional. And so, again, everyone is doing something recorded. And when you get the email, you're going to see, is it a Zoom link to something live? Or is it a link, the teachers are using all different kinds of tools, TikTok, YouTube, all kinds of things.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know, I thought it was just all Zoom. I didn't realize there'd be different platforms.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Hi, you're live on the Town Hall.
Hi, I'm calling to see if any of the kids will have access for email, to be able to communicate with the teachers back and forth and get like Zoom links and things like that.
The question is, will students have email? Communication with the teacher will be through Encourse. The teacher has several different ways to message students. There's announcements, I can't even explain all the different features. And that is one of the things they will be sharing with students over the course of next week.
Okay, so currently, if we log into Encourse now, all the links to like Zoom and things like that, all the links are broken. So will that be fixed? So that the students, for tomorrow, for the videos and for Zoom calls will be working?
So the question was for tomorrow. For tomorrow, you, the parent will get the email with a link to whatever it is that teacher is using. If it's a grade where there's a live Zoom, it will be a Zoom link. If it's a pre-recorded, it will, it will be the link to that.
And that comes in email to the parent?
That is correct, email to the parent tomorrow.
So students will never have access to email?
That is not something we typically have done. Again, Encourse Classroom and Connect is really the main tool that we are using. You know, and again, and you obviously can't see this, but I did a webinar, I took a webinar today, that the teacher has the ability to communicate with a whole class, with an individual student, with a few students, with the students, with the parents. There's a lot of different features in there that we will be showing across next week.
Okay, and I have one other question.
Sure.
And somebody, somebody may have already answered earlier. I just missed it. So if this child has positive for COVID, is there, like, what's the protocol for the rest of the students? So that the parents are prepared, like, is, do they go back to school as normal the next day? For everyone who's not negative, obviously negative? Or is there a 24-hour shutdown? So the parents are aware, you know, if the child does have positive?
Okay, so were you asking if we already know the child is positive? Or if the child just went home sick?
No, if a child comes to school and two days later, the school notifies, lets them know for contact tracing calls to school to say, this person has been tested positive, what is the protocol for the rest of the students in the school?
Okay, so the question is, if we get a notice that a child is positive, what is the protocol? And there is a lot of detail to that. The most important piece is that contact tracing. And so the school nurse works with the Department of Health and obviously gets information from administration, from the teachers. And close contact by the Department of Health, not in that Giacchino Quinto or Galloway Schools, is defined as closer than six feet for more than 10 minutes. So two students could be in the same classroom, but never be within six feet of each other. So that would not be identified as a close contact. Obviously, while we are doing that contact tracing, there will be, we have letters, templates, all set up, notifications to details with parents. A big piece of it is obviously, even though it's done every day anyway, but a cleaning and disinfecting of that classroom. So depending on the particular circumstance, and part of the protocols are related to whether the state or our area, I should say, is in low or medium, the risk level as well. There are different protocols and standing orders that we need to follow. And we have very detailed guidance about that, that our nurses have been reviewing, have shared, we've gone over it with staff, and also in collaboration with our district doctor of record.
Okay, so if a child is set back as positive, if there's, if a very small fan, if it's closed, there's probably no chance to do the closing, right?
If, if we actually, there is actually a chart in the guidance. The question was, if one child's positive, is the whole school closing? And generally speaking, the answer is no. We actually have a guidance chart, and of course, would work with the Department of Health, that looks at the risk level and the number of positives to determine, do we need to close a class for a day or days? Do we need to close the school? And that, again, there are detailed charts, and we work in conjunction with the Department of Health.
Perfect, yes, that's perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you asking. So folks, it is 7:27. And if there's a call that comes through, I will take this one. If you did not get a chance to call me tonight, you are welcome to email me at any time. I will tell you, email is quite active right now between staff and families. So I may not get back to you that day, but if you, if you email me, and 36, 48 hours have gone by, you are welcome to send it again, or you're welcome to call my administrative assistant, Heather Harris, at extension 1016. There are some days that I do not get to all of them, and I apologize for that, but I do try to get to it within 24, 36 hours. I want to thank those of you who watched this evening, those of you that called. I again want to thank Mr. Post and Mrs. Westcott and Mr. Pontover for helping this evening. I'm going to take this one more call and then say my final thought. Hi, you're live on the Town Hall.
Hi, I have a question. Just to back up the one that the caller just called. If a child ends up having to quarantine for 14 days, the virtual that's on there for their classroom, they would just take, like, do it, go to school that way? Or if a child's absent, would they be able to go on virtual that day?
So the question is, if a child needed to quarantine, could the child participate virtually and still be counted as present? Absolutely, in fact, we would encourage that. You know, they could, they wouldn't necessarily switch teachers to the virtual teacher for that grade, but they could still use the teacher's Google Classroom, I'm sorry, Google Classroom, Encourse Classroom, do the remote sessions that are the last hour of the school day. If a child, let's say a child has two symptoms on the checklist and needs to stay home, but isn't ill enough that they can't do schoolwork that day, that is something where you can communicate with the teacher and participate and potentially be counted as a day present. Of course, that's not something we would allow all the time, because then you really wouldn't be a hybrid student. So again, if a child would have to quarantine for some reason, but was well enough and could participate virtually and through the Encourse Classroom every day, would that child be counted as present? Yes, that child would.
Okay, so my one son has allergies. And I mean, he, you know, coughs sometimes. I mean, we have his allergy medicine and everything else. So my concern is that if he's coughing that morning, and then he has, you know, he took his allergy medicine, and then he goes to school and coughs a little bit, or, you know, has some allergy effects, you know, is he, is he going to get sent home? And then, or do I keep him home and try to have him do virtual? So, because I saw your list, and it, you know, it has a lot of allergy symptoms on there. So my concern is that with allergy season upon us, you know, as a parent, what, what do we do? Because we don't, you know, I don't want him going to school and being flagged right away, or, you know, having issues with his school. So I just want to make sure that I'm making the right decision as a parent, and he can still do work that day. It's not like he's, you know, sick if it's his allergies.
So the question is about, let's say a child has allergies. And so some symptoms of allergies are on the screening checklist. And one of the things, when we had training with the nurses and talked about this, is, you know, is the symptom otherwise explained? And so if your child has very well-known allergies, that is something that the school nurse should know and should be communicated anyway. I would encourage you to contact the child's teacher about that as well. Now, if the child is really having severe allergy attacks, where they're going to be coughing a lot or sneezing a lot, then that's going to be really uncomfortable for the child to be in school with a mask. So in that instance, I believe your best bet is to keep the child home, communicate with the teacher, participate that day. And I believe we will be able to count that as a day present.
Okay, and I have one more question. I know you, I think you answered it, but I just want to clarify something. I know you're using the Encourse system, which is great. So are we no longer, we did get the Google Classroom information also. So are teachers using the Encourse platform and Google Classroom? Or are they just using the Encourse platform?
So the question, yes, the question was, when we sent out the email yesterday, students got a Google credential, username and password, and an Encourse. And there are two reasons for that. If a child is using a district Chromebook, you use the Google credential to log into the Chromebook itself. Then, once you log into the Chromebook, then you log into the Encourse Classroom. The second reason is, within Encourse Classroom, the teacher may be linking something to the Google Drive, and the student may need to use the Google credential for that. But we are not using Google Classroom. Does that help?
Okay, so I understand. No, no, I completely understand now, because I was very confused, because I got told. So if your child has their own Chromebook, they then don't need to log into the classroom, they can just log into Encourse, and then they would get all the links through the Encourse to go into the Google if they need to. So they should have a login also on their own Chromebook?
I am going to repeat that, because it's a great point and really helps clarify things. If your child is not using a district device, you have your own laptop, you have your own Chromebook, they just go into the device and go right to Encourse. They only use the first login as that Google login if they are using a district Chromebook. Thank you for asking that.
That makes it easier. No, that makes, now I understand, because I have told you about that. So I just have to understand, like, which child are using what? So I really appreciate that. And one more question, I'm sorry, I know you're getting ready to log off. On tomorrow, we get all this Zoom. They're going to, each teacher is going to explain to the children and to the family what is expected on Monday, because, you know, the anxiety of the children, right? My own kids and other children are like, we have no idea what we're doing. We have no idea how we're going on. So they're going to explicitly explain how Monday is going to work on this Zoom, or whatever, Zoom or video, whatever this teacher chooses.
So the question is, tomorrow, are the teachers going to explain what's happening on Monday? And the answer is yes, they should be. In fact, I actually, personally, did emails with directions to all of the teachers. And then I held a middle and preschool elementary session today, where I went over the expectations and did a Q and A with the teachers today. So one of the purposes of tomorrow, be it live or recorded, or, you know, as I said, teachers that are doing live are also posting something, one of the purposes is to introduce themselves. But the other main purpose is for the students to know what to expect on Monday. And I will say, the most important thing the child does on Monday morning is to log into Encourse. Something will pop up, you're going to click that you're present, and then you will be in, then you will click on Classroom, and you will be in that teacher's Encourse Classroom. And then there'll be, either be a Zoom link or other directions from the teachers. But again, that is one of the purposes tomorrow, to preview that.
I'm sorry, one more. My son's going to middle school, and I did watch the video today, the movie of the orientation. It did not explain where a seventh grader is supposed to go. So I'm wondering, when they get off, I know there'll be a lot of teachers there, but, you know, seventh graders don't really like to ask questions, you know, how they are very shy when it comes to getting off the bus. Are they going to have signs listed with room numbers, where to go? Because still know his room number, it's just my concern, or his team. My concern is that he'll just, you know, not want to ask somebody and just start walking, because I could see him totally doing that. So, you know, are they going to have, like, an easy way for these kids to know where they're going? Because we didn't, we didn't get a map or anything. I was hoping if there was a map and I could show him exactly where to go, I was really hoping that was going to be on the orientation, like a map of the school. So when you get off the bus, you go through this hallway and you look for this classroom. But I didn't, that wasn't on there.
So the question is, for seventh graders who've never been to the middle school before, what happens when they arrive at school on Tuesday or Thursday, depending on whether they're the A group or the B group? So absolutely, there will be teachers to direct them. And that is true every year, not just this year. So if students in middle school are bus riders, when they get dropped off the bus, there will be teachers outside. And if you're in the bus area and facing the middle school, the entrance to the left is the seventh grade entrance. They will be directed through those doors. And then depending, there will actually be teachers, very likely, with signs, are they A, B, C, D, the teams have nicknames and letters. There will be teachers all along the way to direct them which direction to go to get to their team area and their homeroom. We do that every year. And I will say, in this year, in some ways, it's going to be easier, because it's not going to be 750 middle schoolers arriving. It's going to be a third, because about a third of the children are doing virtual. because about a third of the children are doing virtual. And this is true of every school. And the other two-thirds are divided between the A group and the B group. So there's actually going to be fewer children, but as many staff to help direct them.
Oh, that's awesome. That makes me really happy because I know that's one of the biggest stressors, you know?
Absolutely.
Going in, that's beautiful. But I really appreciate it and we hope it's a wonderful year.
Thank you. So folks, I again want to thank everyone for participating this evening. And I know this has been a long and sometimes arduous journey from when school went remote last year, then the summer that I hope you had the chance to enjoy, to Monday when school reopens. Please contact me at any time. Our next board meeting is September 21st. And we will be letting you know whether that will be in person, which we are hoping to do, or virtual. Thank you. We are so excited to have the children return, virtually and in person. Be well, everybody. Good night.